Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for being here for our February 19th full City Council meeting. It shall come to order. It's 2:00 PM. I'm Bruce Harrell, President of the Council. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Juarez, Musceta, O'Brien, Sawat.
Aye.
Bagshaw.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Herbl.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Harrell.
Aye.
Sixth present.
Thank you very much. There's no objection. Councilmember O'Brien will be excused from today's meeting. Hearing no objection, Councilmember O'Brien is excused from today's meeting. If there's no objection, the introduction and referral calendar will be adopted. Hearing no objection, today's introduction and referral calendar is adopted. And similarly, if there's no objection, today's agenda will be adopted. Hearing no objection, today's agenda is adopted. The minutes of the January 28th and February 4th, 2019, City Council meetings have been reviewed, and if there's no objection, the minutes will be signed. Hearing no objection, the minutes are being signed. Record reflected, Councilmember Musceta has joined us. Presentations. At this point, I think many of you know that Mayor Jenny Durkan presented her 2019 State of the City address earlier today at the North Seattle College. And from our charter, City Charter, Article 5, Section 6, it states that it shall be "The duty of the mayor annually at the third regular meeting of the City Council in February to communicate by message to the council a statement of the conditions and affairs of the city and recommend the adoption of such measures as he or she may deem expedient and proper." And so, to fulfill the requirements of the Seattle City Charter's requirements, I believe Deputy Mayor Mike Fong will now formally deliver copies of the State of the City speech to the council. So, Senior Deputy Mayor Mike Fong, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Council President Harrell and members of the City Council. Earlier today, as Council President Harrell mentioned, the mayor presented her special address with regard to the State of the City at North Seattle College. I want to thank all of you, many of you, for being there this morning. And it is now my pleasure, in accordance with City Charter, Article 5, Section 6A, that the State of the City address be delivered on the third meeting in February. And I have 20 copies here for the City Clerk. Mayor looks forward to working with all of you on the issues she identified in the speech. And with that, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Duly noted. And we'll proceed with the report, the agenda, as we usually do. We'll take items on public comment now. At this time, we'll take public comment on items that appear on today's agenda, the introduction and referral calendar, and the City Council's work program. And public comment will be accepted for 20 minutes. And so, we ask that you limit your comments to two minutes. Please identify yourself and the manner with which you would like to speak about it. And I'll just call you out in the order I have you. So, we'll start off with Mr. Alex Zimmerman, followed by Melanie Estes.
Hi, my lovely Fuhrer. Hi, my lovely Fuhrer. My name is Alex Zimmerman. Oh, I'm sorry. I wake up. Yeah, I want to speak about Agenda Number 13 and 14, about zoning. For me, word zoning, you know what it means. It's a little bit confused me because word zoning to me comes like zona. In zona, in Europe, it's Miller concentration camp. It's exactly what is you doing with these zoning rules. Absolutely idiotic, stupid zoning rule, what is don't change nothing. Are you understand about I talking? No, you don't. What is you doing right now in exactly for last six years, what is Amazon have absolutely power? What is New York never accept this crook, Amazon? Probably package what is you did for six years, so New York's a very smart people. So, how with this word zona, zoning, concentration camp rules can change something? Nothing will be changed. And nothing will be changed for another six years. Because everything what is you have here is a very low-class professional, and I call you human garbage, is exactly who you are. Because no one from you know about business, and no one from you represent 700,000 people. Maybe you present somebody, but it's not my people. And I don't think so, this people for this 50 percentage poor, what is live in Seattle right now, don't have enough money for rent or for housing. So, my question right now to everybody, and I speak right now to the 700,000 emerald degenerate, brave ass ships, you know what it is, ships who live in this city, when we will change this, clean this council chamber totally? Four out, five to go. Stand up, Seattle. We need cleanse this dirty chamber from this low, very low-class professional and pure crook and criminal. Thank you very much.
Okay, so Melanie Estes will be next, and then Kyla North.
Oh, no problem.
I know I'm wasting my time. It'll be done very quickly.
No worries.
Sorry, it's a really raw day for me. It's the one-year anniversary of my uncle's death, and he didn't even live in Washington or Seattle. Councilmember Bagshaw, I live in your district. My name is Melanie Estes. I've called your office a couple times in the last couple weeks. It's not surprising I haven't heard from anyone, because it's been the snowpocalypse. I don't care that no one has answered the phone, they've been doing their jobs. I am here to address Number 1 and Number 15. Honestly, 15 is about the Seattle Children's Research Institute getting money that they need and deserve. My niece was airlifted on July 6th. Sorry. I'm just wanting you guys to take me seriously. And I don't care that I'm emotional, because I'm not apologizing for that. But my niece was airlifted to Seattle Children's on July 6th, 2013. And she was in the NICU there for over a month. And she is my favorite human on this planet. She loves laughter and Baby Shark. I have listened to Baby Shark with her, and it has brought me so much joy. Why does every five-year-old love Baby Shark so much? I know I'm running out of time. I am here to say that I have a bunch of opinions about what you all do with your work. Councilmember Juarez, I really appreciate what you have done for District 5, because I have worked with you. I have been in the Community Connector Program through the Human Services Department, and I really appreciate that you all proved that. And I know my time is up, but I am here to say, I have a bunch of opinions about how you do your jobs, but you are tasked with the impossible, and I am ready to work and roll up my sleeves. And if you need anything, like email me. Give me a broom. Amazon will probably leave this town someday, but I will be here to clean up the mess. I appreciate you, Councilmembers, like I know you. I have called your office, Councilmember Sawat, and your people have listened to me. And they've told me, like what I know, that I have a backbone, and I can stand up to Cornell and Associates, a slumlord of this town. And I did, myself.
Thank you, Ms. Estes.
I just want you to know that I'm here, I have opinions, and I'm like ready to work. Because if I have opinions, I am ready to work. And please email me.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Our next two speakers are Kyla North and then Scott Aldrich.
My name is Kyla North, and I'm a student at Seattle University, and I live here in the city. I'm here as a volunteer for Unified Seattle, and I'm making this statement today because after working with shelters like Hammond House, I've had a chance to learn firsthand about the issues surrounding homelessness and the undeniable role drug addiction plays. Low-barrier shack encampments like Lo Ha Village and South Lake Union will not be successful because, like other shack villages, it does not emphasize or require any lifestyle changes, no real oversight, or proponents conducive to adjusting their lifestyle. Our city needs to focus on addressing the root causes of homelessness. For some, that means financial mentorship; for others, treatment for drug use or mental illness. Rejection of this reality encourages policies to keep individuals enslaved to their addictions while offering little to no services to assist in their recovery. Lake Union's Village is an example of this type of aggressive city policy. Shack villages are filled with a large majority of people with serious mental illness and substance abuse, problems who need help, help they are not receiving inside or outside the encampment under current city policy. We cannot store people in shacks to succumb to their own vices and accept back them not to end up back on the streets. We need real solutions, not shacks.
Thank you for your testimony. Our last speaker will be Scott Aldrich.
I've come to speak in support of Number 8, Resolution 31863, about misclassification of workers as temporary and independent contractors, or just independent contractors. I'm a tech worker. We've worked at a couple different tech companies. I've been subject to that sort of misclassification. It's very frustrating, having to reapply for your job about every year, which I'm sure several members of the council will sympathize with. It results in a lot of unnecessary unemployment and inefficiency in performing your tasks. And it would be really great if you could look into that, because I think that would help everyone, tech companies included. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. That will conclude our public comment section, and we'll move to payment of the bills. Please read the titles.
Council Bill 119459, A Property and Money to Pay Souten Claims in Order in Payment Thereof. Council Bill 119463, A Property and Money to Pay Souten Claims in Order in Payment Thereof.
Okay, let's take these individual. I'll move to pass Council Bill 119459. I'll move to second, the council bill pass. Please call the roll on the passage of the bill.
Juarez.
Aye.
Musceta.
Aye.
Sawat.
Aye.
Bagshaw.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Herbl.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Harrell.
Aye.
Eight in favor, none opposed.
Bill passed, and Sheriff sign it. I will move to pass Council Bill 119463. So, moving to second, the bill pass. Any further comments? Please call the roll on the passage of the bill.
Juarez.
Aye.
Musceta.
Aye.
Sawat.
Aye.
Bagshaw.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Herbl.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Harrell.
Aye.
Eight in favor, none opposed.
The bill passed, and Sheriff sign it. Please read Agenda Item Number 1.
The Report of the City Council, Agenda Item 1, Clerk File 314415, 2019 State of the City Address, Delivered by Mayor Jenny A. Durkan on February 19th, 2019.
Just one moment. So, this is a, just sort of a perfunctory filing of the file, the speech, if you will. And I believe we will vote on it, and we'll place the file on the file. Before we vote on filing the clerk file, would anyone wish to say any words? Nope. We're good. Councilmember Sawat.
Thank you, President Harrell. Just wanted to explain to members of the public that the vote the council is about to take will file into the city's records, the mayor's State of the City address. And of course, it should be on record, so I will be voting yes. But my vote will not be a vote on the content of the speech, however, and I wanted to bring to light something that the mayor said that was, in my view, dangerously inaccurate. Three times in her speech, Mayor Durkan said that Seattle has invested over $710 million in affordable housing during her time in office, I think. However, compare that wild claim to what it actually says in her budget. In the mayor's budget, it lists the funds that she has made available to build affordable housing. It is, and this can be verified by councilmembers, it is less than $15 million per year, not $710 million. And as a matter of fact, if the political establishment was actually willing to spend $710 million on building affordable housing instead of under $15 million, then we could actually begin to seriously address the affordable housing crisis. The problem is that when the mayor exaggerates the investments in affordable housing, it sounds like it is not necessary to tax big business to build affordable housing on a scale big enough to have a real impact. But that would be wrong. In reality, the mayor is not investing $710 million. Really, she's investing less than 1% of the city budget in affordable housing, and regular people will need to continue to get organized, to build a movement, to build anything close to affordable housing worth $710 million. And let's remember that ordinary people in New York City just won a massive victory against Amazon in its attempt to get a $3 billion corporate handout, including a helipad for Jeff Bezos. It really shows that when people get organized, we can win. This was assumed to be a done deal by everybody, including business owners, who were surprised by the fact that Amazon had to back off. So, I will be voting yes on filing this clerk file, but I do not endorse her false claim about investments in affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you for those words, Councilmember Sawat. Would anyone else like to say anything before we filed the clerk file? And for the viewing public, this is a public document. The facts are, I believe that Councilmember Sawat referring to our Page 7 of the published document. And I personally wanted to thank the mayor for giving a speech and creating a vision for what this city could be. Okay, I'll move to clerk file 314415. Those in favor of filing the clerk, please vote aye. Aye. Those opposed, vote no. The motion carries, and the file is placed on file. Please read the next agenda item into the record.
The Report of the Governance, Equity, and Technology Committee, Agenda Item 2, Council Bill 119454, Relating to the City of Seattle's Myrtle Reservoir Radio Transmitter Facility. Committee recommends it will pass.
Okay, this is an item that had come from the Governance Equity and Technology Committee. This council bill basically authorized the Finance and Administrative Services, FAS, to enter into a 25-year lease agreement with the King County and Puget Sound Emergency Radio Network, otherwise known as PCERN. And PCERN, basically, their sort of purpose on earth is to install and operate an emergency radio equipment at the Myrtle transmitter facility. And this, again, this system, this PCERN system is a countrywide, countywide, emergency radio system that was used by first responders. The older system is about 20 years old, and the previous manufacturer ended their support for these, many of its critical components. That actually ended in 2018. And so, as you may recall, in 2015, the voters approved a $273 million levy to upgrade the aging emergency radio network. So, this is the third such agreement that the city and the King County slash PCERN, that governs PCERN's use of a city-owned property. And there's a previous agreement between SPU and King County, and an agreement with FAS and King County govern the Maple Leaf transmitter facility. So, unless there's any questions or comments, I'll ask that the clerk, please call the roll on the passage of the bill.
Juarez.
Aye.
Musceta.
Aye.
Sawat.
Aye.
Bagshaw.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Herbl.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Harrell.
Aye.
Eight in favor, none opposed.
The bill passed, and Sheriff sign it. Please read Agenda Item Number 3.
Agenda Item 3, Appointment 1229, Appointment of Yoko Kanugi as member International Special Review District Board for term to November 30th, 2018. The committee recommends the appointment be confirmed.
So, Yoko Kanugi is now being asked to be appointed to the International Special Review District Board for term beginning November 30th, for term to November 30th, 2019. And she's again, was approved by our committee on February 5th. A little bit about her background, she's a licensed architect with over 18 years' experience in Seattle and two years in Japan where she was born. She's currently working for Tsuyama Peterson Deguchi in Seattle, where she works on both public and private sector projects. She gained special interest in the Chinatown International District, and she's come here to our area, and she's coming for the ISRD Board as an applicant. So, she sort of knows that experience from both sides of the picture. So, with that, I'm pleased to request that the full council confirm Ms. Kanugi to the International Special Review District Board for term of confirmation again to November 30th, 2019. Any questions? Okay, those in favor of confirming the appointment, please vote aye. Aye. Those opposed, vote no. The motion carries, and the appointment is confirmed. Please read items, let's go 4 through 6.
Agenda Items 4 through 6, Appointments 1247 through 1249, Appointments of Richard H. Salz and Joseph R. Woolley as members of Community Surveillance Working Group for term to December 31st, 2020. An Appointment of Shankar and Ariana as member of Community Surveillance Working Group for term to December 31st, 2021. The committee recommends these appointments be confirmed.
Very good. So, another item that comes out of the Governance Equity and Technology Committee, and some of these names should be familiar to you, but just to sort of describe what this group is about, these three clerk files are new appointments to the newly-created Community Surveillance Working Group, or CSWG. It's a new seven-member surveillance working group that will advise the council and the executive on matters of surveillance technology from the community's perspective. And that becomes critical, and we're concerning ourselves with protecting the public's privacy on critical technology that is being deployed by the city and other jurisdictions. So, this Community Surveillance Working Group was created by Council Bill 119218, and again, will provide a Privacy and Civil Liberties Impact Statement for each Surveillance Impact Report, otherwise known as an SIR. And this report is intended to document and identify how surveillance technology is used, how data will be securely stored, retained, and accessed, and capable of being audited by our departments. In short, it allows policymakers like ourselves to look at, to see how we're using technology to assure the public that their privacy needs and expectations are met. So, these three folks here that I'm about to describe are council appointments. There are also four mayoral appointments. And I'll just sort of let the public know who those four are. But for these three, the first one is Richard Salz. Again, most of you know him. He's the Executive Director of One America, a statewide immigrant and refugees advocacy organization. And Rich is a well-versed leader at the local, state, and national levels on immigrant rights, civil liberties, and racial equity. And Rich has a full plate, and we want to thank him for, again, looking at certain communities from a privacy standpoint. And thank you, Rich, for being able to serve in this capacity. The next appointment is Joseph Woolley, to the Community Surveillance Working Group. And he volunteers on the Privacy and Cybersecurity Subcommittee on CTAB, or the Community Technology Advisory Board. They've been looking at these issues as well. And he currently works for Amazon as a senior program manager, and has spent several years with technology advisory firms in Seattle. He's also a mentor for the Puget Sound Chapter of Year Up, which I think many of you know is a workforce training program aimed at closing the opportunity divide. And the last council appointee is Shankar Narayan. And of course, he's the Technology and Liberty Project Director at the ACLU of Washington. He's a strong advocate for protecting civil liberties, and he works to bring transparency and accountability to surveillance technologies, and lift the voices of impacted communities, including people of color, immigrants, religious, and gender minorities. And again, Shankar, thank you for serving in this, and I look forward to your leadership on identifying many issues as they arise. Just by way of background, the mayoral appointments are, the four are Asha Mohammed, she's a program manager at King County Department of Community and Human Services. She's one of the five members representing equity-focused organizations. Dr. Negan Daya, she's a University of Washington Assistant Professor, mayoral appointee. Michelle Meriwether is the president and CEO at Urban League of Metropolitan Seattle. And Masih Faladi is a counsel on American-Islamic relations. And again, we look forward to there, working with them as well. So, there you have, those are the seven folks, and we're to vote on these three. Any questions about any of these individuals or this clerk file? Councilmember Gonzalez.
No questions, Council President, but I did want to take an opportunity to say thank you to you as the Chair of the Governance, Equity, and Technology Committee for taking over this body of work. It's an incredibly important part of the work that we're doing at the city, and I just wanted to express my gratitude to you as the original sponsor of the Surveillance Technology Ordinance, that I'm really pleased and happy to see all of the work that you have done as Chair of the committee responsible for the Seattle Information Technology Department, and really appreciate you working so diligently and hard on addressing many of the community concerns that have gotten us to the point of being able to do some of the community outreach, and now standing up this community advisory group that will be really instrumental to the City Council in determining the differing complex technology impacts to privacy and the interests of our constituents. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gonzalez. Any further questions or comments? Okay, let's vote on these appointees. Those in favor of confirming the appointments, please vote aye. Aye. Those opposed, vote no. The motion carries, and appointment is confirmed. Okay, please read Agenda Item Number 7.
Agenda Item 7, Appointment 1251, Appointment of Susan R. Taylor as member of Seattle Ethics and Elections Commission for term to December 31st, 2021. The committee recommends the appointment be confirmed.
Okay, now we're going to put our Seattle Ethics and Elections Commission hat on, and we have Ms. Susan Taylor, who was approved by the Governance, Equity, and Technology Committee on February 5th. And just by way of her background, she is the, she works, she has vast experience working as an attorney with expertise in compliance, corporate governance, and ethics. She's the interim compliance counsel at Tektronix, Inc., and that followed five years as Chief Compliance Counsel for Tektronix and the Fluke Corporation, which are both global manufacturers of electronic test and measurement equipment based in Oregon and Washington, respectively. She began her career at Foster Pepper, and then worked at Washington Mutual for 10 years. She's graduated from Berkeley Law School and has a BA in human biology from Stanford. I want to thank Ms. Taylor for her willingness to serve, and with that, I'm pleased to ask that you all confirm Ms. Taylor to the Seattle Ethics and Elections Commission. Any comments on Ms. Taylor? Not. Those in favor of confirming the appointment, please vote aye. Aye. Those opposed, vote no. The motion carries, and that appointment is confirmed. Please read the next agenda item.
The Report of the Housing, Health, Energy, and Workers' Rights Committee, Agenda Item 8, Resolution 31863, Relating to Misclassification of Workers as Independent Contractors When They Should Be Designated as Employees, Requesting Semiannual Updates to the Council Starting at the End of the Third Quarter of 2019 on the Work on the Office of Labor Standards and Labor Standards Advisory Commission is Doing to Investigate and Correct Misclassifications. Committee recommends a resolution be adopted as amended.
Councilmember Musceta.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I might, I might defer to the prime sponsor of the legislation, and I can make a few closing comments at the end. This came through my committee, but it was an honor to work with Councilmember Herbl on this.
Councilmember Herbl.
Yes, many thanks to the Chair of the committee, Councilmember Musceta, for allowing me to move this resolution through her committee. The reason why this resolution is so important is that we are seeing that the definition of employment is changing before our very eyes as we work to pass better labor laws to protect our employees. There are more and more employees who are being categorized as contractors and not eligible to receive access to our labor laws, like $15 minimum wage, paid sick and save time, and a whole host of other protections for the workforce. The resolution itself asks the Office of Labor Standards to propose policy solutions to the council in order to address the issue of misclassification. Misclassification is when an employer calls somebody who fits the definition of an employee a contractor. The resolution asks the Labor Standards Advisory Committee to develop a work program and consider how the committee can work with the Office of Labor Standards to engage stakeholders in addressing this issue. It also directs the Office of Labor Standards to develop strategies that the city should consider based on the findings of a study that is being conducted by the Washington State Department of Commerce with a delivery date of June 1st, 2019. The, I've been corresponding with an Amazon Flex driver who, over the last year, has described evolving practices from that employer. And it has gone from a situation where people were told a week in advance of shifts being available at the same time, and individuals having the opportunity to compete for that shift, to what the practice is now, is that shifts are offered at any different times of the day, different times of the week, and literally, those shifts are gone within a minute. So, this means that people are actually having to spend large amounts of time at their computer that they're not being compensated for waiting for these shifts. A Gizmodo report identifies that the issue at hand is labor misclassification. Companies pay the drivers to do the work of employees, but treat them as independent contractors. contractors, denying them basic amenities like healthcare benefits, worker compensation in the event of an on-the-job injury. This is something that two drivers that were interviewed for this article had themselves experienced, and we know from the National Employment Law Project that the determination of whether or not a worker is doing the job of a contractor or employee comes down to some specific key factors, and that is not simply whether or not you call them a contractor or an employee. So I am really looking forward to the Office of Labor Standards working with the Labor Standards Advisory Committee to explore this issue and bring some policy recommendations back to the council to act on.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbold. Councilmember Mosqueta?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. So when I came to office a little over a year ago now, the first conversation I had with Councilmember Herbold was regarding her longstanding interest in helping to address issues of misclassification so that our labor standards can ensure strong protections for all workers. As we know, misclassification affects many industries, many traditional industries, like the folks that I've worked with in the past, in home care, janitorial work, construction, and restaurant work. And now we've seen more and more examples of how misclassification is prevalent in the gig economy. Many workers who are mischaracterized by their employers as independent contractors result in fewer labor protections and really put the workers in a precarious position when they've tried to avoid taxes, or not pay workers' compensation, or unemployment insurance, or other financial obligations, that sometimes the workers don't actually know that they're in that situation until they get injured or they get let go. Also, we know that it's a really important issue to look at very carefully because there's a number of folks who are truly independent contractors. They're bona fide independent contractors who have direction and control, who set their own schedule, who have their own tools, and they are like our real estate agents and our hairdressers, folks who are truly independent contractors, and many of the domestic workers that have created their own companies as well, which we'll talk about in a minute, folks who truly have direction and control over their work. They should have the right balance so that our laws truly reflect their work. And I think the approach that Councilmember Herbold has put together through this resolution, her work with our business and labor partners at the table, will help us find that right balance to address misclassification, and we look forward to seeing how this issue continues to play out at the state level as well. I appreciate your leadership on this and happy to see this move forward.
Very good. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you. So I want to thank Councilmember Herbold for her continued dedication and work in this particular space. I know she's been thinking through this particular subject for quite some time, including when she was the Chair responsible for labor issues at the city, and also want to echo thanks for Councilmember Mosqueta for making time in her busy committee schedule to hear this important issue. And I just want to say that I really support the direction of this resolution. As a young lawyer, I had an opportunity to work with my firm, Schrader Goldmark &amp; Bender, and the Latina Latino Bar Association of Washington to establish a legal clinic at El Centro de la Raza, still housed at El Centro de la Raza, has been going strong since 2008, and really proud of the fact that this legal clinic has been able to help and provide legal services to thousands of low-wage workers that wouldn't ordinarily have access to legal services in a lot of different areas. But one of the things, the reason I bring that up is because one of the areas that we received a lot of inquiries from, from many, many, many people, dozens of people who would go to the legal clinic seeking legal advice, is in this space of independent contractors and really struggling with understanding from a worker perspective whether you truly are an independent contractor or not, and the amount of egregious examples of abuse, of misclassification were just innumerable. So many stories from people living here in Seattle, working in Seattle, who were forced to, for example, sign contracts, signing their rights away even though they didn't speak English, for example, didn't understand what they were signing, and even if they did speak English, the complexities of the documents that they're being asked to sign that effectively consent to being an independent contractor when they're actually functioning like a worker. Those are the stories that I kept seeing coming through a legal clinic that I know still are coming through that legal clinic. And so looking forward to being able to really dig into this body of work and providing some protection for this class of workers is going to be really critical and important. And I would urge Councilmember Herbold and the Office of Labor Standards to figure out a way to partner up with many of the legal clinics that are currently happening throughout the city, through the King County Bar Association, through the Washington State Bar Association, and certainly through our minority bar associations, who have real-life examples of how this misclassification plays out from the worker perspective, and happy to create connections in that space to make sure that whatever the policies that are being developed are going to be truly responsive to some of the needs. And in closing, I'll just say that we couldn't have a better director at the Office of Labor Standards than Marty Garfinkel to address and tackle this issue. He is considered an expert in the state in terms of his legal expertise related to independent contractor misclassification. He's done some of the most seminal wage-in-our-class action cases in this area, and you all will be very well-served by his expertise, and I know this is one of his favorite topics in the whole wide world. So I expect that this work is going to be really robust, and I'm really excited to see what the recommendations are going to be. So, thank you.
Very good. Excellent. Okay, so if less, there's any further comments, we'll go ahead and vote. Those in favor of adopting the resolution, please vote aye. Aye. Those opposed, vote no. The motion carries, the resolution is adopted, and the Chair will sign it. Okay, please read Items Nine through Twelve.
Agenda Items Nine through Twelve, Appointments 1253 through 1256, Appointments of Andrea Krenzler and Emily Dills as Members of Domestic Workers Standards Board for term to February 28, 2021, and Appointments of Elijah Anderson and Dana S. Barnett as Members of Domestic Workers Standards Board for term to February 28, 2022. The committee recommends that these appointments be confirmed.
Councilmember Mosqueta.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm really excited that we're here today. About a year ago, we were in community with folks who are hiring entity advocates, folks who are working with domestic workers themselves, union members, community, coming together and brainstorming in the community about how we, as a city, could be the first city in the nation to pass a Domestic Workers' Bill of Rights. And here we are today, about to appoint the first four members to the Domestic Workers' Standards Board. This work over the last year was made possible directly because of the workers and the hiring entity, High Road Employers, who came forward. We had folks like Kim England, a researcher from the University of Washington who was at every meeting, Working Washington, who's in the audience with us today, Casa Latina, SEIU 775, the National Domestic Workers Alliance, the National Employment Law Project, Seattle Nanny Network, who's with us here today as well, April Lane's Housekeeping, Moms Rising, Hand in Hand, and many of the advocates around Seattle are workers themselves who took time to be there, who made the opportunity to come in and help shape this legislation, making sure that we centered policy changes on the lived experience of the workers themselves. We heard pretty terrifying stories of folks who had experienced sexual harassment, wage theft, intimidation, and we heard harrowing stories of people who found really great employers for them to work with, or hiring entities that they were able to find respect and dignity in their workplace. We heard from Casa Latina workers who had started as domestic workers themselves and then created their own businesses to create true independence and economic sustainability for their families. And with all of their input at the table, we made sure that we passed some really critical provisions into law. We made sure that all domestic workers, regardless of whether they're independent contractors, bona fide independent contractors, that is, or employees, that everyone got access to the minimum wage, and this means for every worker in Seattle. We made sure that there was rest and meal breaks for long periods of time for those who are working for the same hiring entity. We guaranteed privacy protections for workers to make sure that their documents, whether it's passports, driver's license, green cards, were not being withheld and forcing folks to work off the clock or in precarious situations. And we protected them from retaliation so that those documents could not be withheld from the workers. And we protected them against discrimination, thanks to a companion ordinance that Councilmember Herbold worked on and we quickly passed. We had legislation that made sure that these workers, who had experienced some of the most horrific stories of discrimination, truly had protections that we expect for every other worker as well. And we know that the work is not done. We've heard repeatedly from folks who are hiring entities and from the workers themselves that there is additional desire to make sure access to healthcare, retirement benefits, unemployment insurance, workers' compensation. All of these issues require really thoughtful consideration as we change the policy going forward, and that requires us to have a Domestic Workers' Standards Board. So here we are today with four individuals that we're excited to bring forward to help us figure out how we can engage and do the outreach, the critical outreach and education that's necessary so that all hiring entities and workers know their new rights and protections under the law. I'm really excited to bring forward the four nominations, and I may, Mr. President, I'd like to give you a little bit of background on them and ask for a special favor.
Very good.
We have Andrea Krenzler from the Fair Work Center, who has worked as a nanny and has experience with domestic workers as a parent, and has also worked on labor standards for many years, including right here at the city, working for Councilmember Herbold in her role as well with the Fair Work Center. We have, and Councilmember Herbold, and I don't mean to skip over if you have anything to add. Okay.
She's going to be a great addition to this board. Everything that Andrea has done in her entire career has been focused on addressing the greatest needs of those with the least in our community. So thank you for putting her name forward.
Excellent. And then Item Number 10 is Emily Dills with the Seattle Nanny Network. She was instrumental in shaping the original policy. Emily has worked as a domestic worker and now helps to connect and help households get access to solutions so that folks can have their rights protected and have access to great workers. Emily and others on her team have worked at the city and state level to improve the industry for parents and providers, and I'm really excited that she was able to give us so much of her time over the last year to help us craft this legislation, bring forward the voice of High Road Employers, make sure that we're leveling the playing field for those employers as well so that good standards can be adhered to from everyone. And, Mr. President, Emily is here with her family. If we might suspend the rules and allow her for a moment to address the council.
If there's no objection, why don't we suspend the rules, and we'd love to hear from Ms. Dills.
Thank you. Am I on?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosqueta, I want to tell you to begin with, thank you very much for your leadership here. An incredible privilege to be a part of it. And Councilmember Herbold, you as well, I really appreciate everything that you have done. And Councilmember Gonzalez, I remember going way back to the beginning when we began this work. I'm not going to take a lot of time, and I really appreciate your making the exception here. The in-home employment industry is a shadow economy, which Councilmember Mosqueta has mentioned again and again, and I feel that any trade without structure is left to write their own rules and is defined, for better or for worse, by its market leaders. I feel that right now, we have an opportunity with the Standards Board to find a balance between the needs of the already burdened modern family, which many of us are familiar with, and the domestic worker who we know deserves protections, and it's an honor to be put forward for the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dills.
Thank you so much. I've got goosebumps. Okay. There's two more folks that I'd like to introduce you to. Elijah Anderson. Elijah has been organizing with Seattle-area nannies and has worked as a childcare provider or a house manager for over two decades, and has also been instrumental in this policy work. And then lastly, we have Dana Barnett, who is a longtime advocate, attorney, a parent, a member of Hand in Hand, who has been working with domestic workers on a regular basis for the last few years, and we're really excited to have Ms. Barnett as well, and her innovation to policy change and her excitement around implementation and making sure that word really gets out to hiring entities is something she talked about. These are the four first appointments to the Domestic Workers' Standards Board, and we want to thank them in advance for their incredible generosity with their time, their ideas, and their commitment to this issue.
Thank you, Councilmember Mosqueta. Any further comments before we vote? Okay, say none. Those in favor of confirming the appointments, please vote aye. Aye. Those opposed, vote no. The motion carries, and appointments are confirmed. Okay. Please read the report of the Planning, Land Use, and Zoning Committee.
The report of the Planning, Land Use, and Zoning Committee, Agenda Item 13, Council Bill 119362, relating to land use and zoning amendment Section 23.41.010 of Seattle Miss Pico to approve the 2018 University District Neighborhood Design Guidelines. Committee recommends the bill pass as amended.
And Councilmember Johnson, I'm sorry to say that applause was not for you.
No, no. Rarely does anyone applaud land use decisions, Council President, but we don't do it for the recognition. We're going to take action this afternoon on two design guidelines that actually many members of the community have spent a long time working on to get us to this point. The first, as our clerk read out so ably, is the University District Design Guidelines. These are really critical in this state of time because of the recent zoning changes that we made in the neighborhood and the now prevalence of new projects that are going in the neighborhood that are taller buildings. So these design guidelines reflect change in the character of the university district and will allow for more compatibility with those new high-rise character buildings of the university district by the light rail station. It started with a series of community workshops in 2017, and resulted in the design guidelines that are here in front of us today. I'm happy to talk through some of these, but really, this is about how do we create more opportunities for those tall towers to reflect both off of each other and have a presence in the neighborhood? How do we create better urban context and alley space activation? In particular, we've got a lot of alleys in the university district, not dissimilar from downtown, that we'd like to do a lot more activation. How do we create some setbacks, particularly in the university district, to reflect the unique character of the Ave itself? And then how do we do better with public space realm connectivity? So a lot of really great stuff in here, happy to ask for your support.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? If not, please call the roll on the passage of the bill.
Juarez.
Aye.
Mosqueta.
Aye.
Sawat.
Aye.
Beckshaw.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Herbold.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Harrell.
Aye.
Eight in favor and none opposed.
Bill passed, and the Chair will sign it. Please read Agenda Item Number 14.
Agenda Item 14, Council Bill 119439, relating to land use and zoning amendment Section 23.41.010 of the Seattle Miss Pico to approve the 2018 Uptown Neighborhood Design Guidelines. Committee recommends the bill pass.
Councilmember Johnson.
Ditto the Uptown Neighborhood. The Uptown Neighborhood also is the beneficiary of having had some zoning changes in the last several years. This set of design guidelines is really reflective of the community as it is today. We had several very poignant moments in committee where we had folks coming to us and suggesting that the current design guidelines weren't working for them because the neighborhood wants to see development that is more funky, is more artistic, is more in concert with what the neighborhood itself identifies as, but their current design guidelines don't allow for that kind of flexibility and that kind of encouragement. And so these new design guidelines do. They put an emphasis on habitat and native species, they put an emphasis on important locations, gateways, corner sites, and sites adjacent to Seattle Center, and really try to incentivize developers to make this more the arts district that it is through visual interpretation in a lot of their buildings in Uptown. Also, a project that has been through several years of public comment, and very excited to finally be able to bring this one forward.
Very good. Councilmember Beckshaw.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson, thank you, and thanks to all of those folks from our Uptown Neighborhood. I want to recognize in particular Rick Hooper, and many of us know Deb Frosto, her partner Alan Hart, who have done a lot around the urban design framework. I'm really excited about this, especially when we've got the art and culture overlay coming in with our new arena just outside, making the connection for Belltown residents as well as Uptown residents around the arena and Seattle Center is going to make a big difference. So thanks for shepherding this one.
Any further questions or comments? If not, please call the roll on the passage of the bill.
Juarez.
Aye.
Mosqueta.
Aye.
Sawat.
Aye.
Beckshaw.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Herbold.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Harrell.
Aye.
Eight in favor and none opposed.
Bill passed, and the Chair will sign it. Please read the report of the Sustainability and Transportation Committee.
The report of the Sustainability and Transportation Committee, Agenda Item 15, Council Bill 119457, granting Seattle Children's Research Institute permission to construct, install, and maintain one set of private communications conduits. Committee recommends the bill pass.
Thanks for filling in for Councilmember Bryan. Councilmember Johnson?
Briefly, this is the kind of usual term permit that we approve here at City Council, a ten-year permit with two tenure options. If we were to act today, this would allow for Seattle Children's Research Institute in the Denny Triangle neighborhood to create two new private communication conduits under Terry Avenue, south of Virginia Street and north of Stewart Street, and in the alley between Virginia Street and Stewart Street north of Ninth Avenue. These will allow them to share data between research facilities on research related to cancer, lupus, and other children's-related diseases. In total, the term permits, I think, are in the neighborhood of about $9,000, which is generally our cost to recoup the staff time associated with processing these permits. So they have an inflationary adjustment to them, so I think it's a couple percent per year, and again, we use those resources from those permits. And again, we use those resources from those permits to process the applications when they come in once every decade or so. So I can't answer many questions, but I don't anticipate there will be.
Very good. Any questions or comments? If not, please call the roll on the passage of the bill.
Juarez.
Aye.
Musqueda.
Aye.
Sawat.
Aye.
Bagshaw.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Herbold.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Harrell.
Aye.
Ateen, favor and unopposed.
Bill passes, and the chair will sign it. Okay, is there any further business coming for the council? I have a few things I have to do. So first, I'd like to move to excuse Councilmember O'Brien from next Monday's meeting, which is February 25. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. And then I need to move to be excused from on March 4th and March 11th. Any comments?
Depends on who's going to be your pro town.
I'll tell you in a minute. All those in favor of me being excused on March 4th and March 11th, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. And Councilmember Juarez has ordered a much larger gavel than this little one, and she'll be the president that month. So, thank you. With that, everyone have a great rest of the day, and we stand adjourned.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.